Good evening to you all and welcome to our work session of the council for the month of May. As you can probably determine, we have decided to start our meeting an hour early this evening. Customarily, we meet at 6:00 and I want to thank the council for all being here timely this evening. So, as you probably know, we intend to take a dinner break somewhere around 6:30, assuming we're still in session at that time, and I believe we probably will be. We have a number of items to cover. So, Madam Clerk, Ms. Knotts, yes, would you call the role at this time, please?
Mayor Marshburn.
I am present.
Mayor Protim Behringer.
Here.
Councilmember Dillinger.
Here.
Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember Vance.
Here.
And Councilmember Singleton.
Here.
Okay, again, thank you all for being here. And before I recognize the town manager for a recognition, I'm going to ask the council if you'd like to go ahead and adopt the agenda that you have this evening that covers our meeting this evening. So, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I move it.
Okay, moving properly seconded. Any questions, hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay. All right, before we jump into our agenda, full agenda, and discussion reports, I'm going to recognize the town manager who I believe has a special introduction he'd like to make at this time. So, Mr. Dickerson.
Thank you, Mayor. Town council, just wanted to make an introduction of our new Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Director, Maria Munoz Blanco. Joined us earlier this week on Monday, and I know she's excited to get going, and we've been out showing her some of the facilities and introducing her to staff, staffing Parks and Rec Cultural Resources and other staff. And she brings more than 25 years of experience in the public sector. She has a lot of experience in some larger municipalities and cities, metropolitan areas. She served as Deputy Director of the Fulton County Arts Council in Atlanta, Executive Director of the Cultural Arts Council of Houston in Harris County, Director of Cultural Affairs for the City of Dallas Office of Cultural Affairs, Executive Director of Cultural Affairs for Miami-Dade College, and most recently, she was Director of Parks and Neighborhoods for the City of Memphis. And in that leadership role, she oversaw a recreational system that had 162 parks, just slightly less than what Garner has, right? 24 community centers, five senior centers, 17 pools, eight public golf courses, a football stadium slash fairgrounds, and a variety of athletic and sports facilities. And in Dallas, she led the Office of Cultural Affairs for nine years. Then there's some whole list of accolades and things, so we welcome her to the town and look forward to her leading us, you know, and with our new rec center and other park planning we're going to do tonight, and we just want to say welcome.
Thank you. Special to me, Mayor.
Okay, and I had the privilege of meeting her earlier this week. Maybe, I guess it was her first day here, and so we had a chance to chat. I was thinking, Mr. Manager, as you were naming all those very large cities that she has worked in in the past, I have at some point during my adult life driven through, I think, each one of those cities as I have traveled, and she probably doesn't need me to say this, but I think you'll find the traffic quite a bit less than that you do in most of those. Took me a long time to drive through several of those cities, I think, sure enough. So, welcome to Garner. We're proud of our town. We think a lot of good things are happening here, and we look forward to you joining us. And tonight's agenda is certainly an indication of some upcoming very important things that we're planning for our town and our citizens here. So, you'll be, I think, right in the middle of most all of this, sure enough. So, thank you. Put on your working shoes and be ready to go. Okay, councilmember, anybody wanting to say a quick word to our new director?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Got a lot going on, and sound like you've got a strong background. This might be a little quieter for you, and a lot of people want to go many places. They like to relax in Garner, so I won't mention other names, but welcome.
Go ahead, here.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to try to be a little cute here. One of my sons and his family just moved this way from Houston, so it must be a migration, you know, a good thing that's coming, right, since you came to?
Maybe so. Okay, anybody else?
Welcome. Welcome to you.
Okay, I think she's been properly welcomed now, so we'll jump into our agenda. So, Item C obviously covers a couple, two things, and the first one is discussion and reports. And as council is well aware, we've had some previous discussions on this. Item number one has to do with Meadowbrook and Yergin Park master plans and the Yergin Park pro forma, so we'll start there. And I will recognize, I believe, Mr. Hodges, who will lead this discussion.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. We are, as the mayor said, here tonight with our consultants to talk through the master plan documents for both of the parks, as well as the pro forma report and plan, operations plan that's been put together for the Yergin Park. That's going to be a little bit different discussion than we've ever had previously because we've never really done a pro forma ahead of opening a facility like this for a park, but there's lots of elements with that park that we want to make sure that we are getting your input on and have a good understanding of the way that we're proposing to use that park as we look at the numbers, the return, and the operating cost. So, we'll look forward to active discussion about that tonight. I did want to mention that Mr. Roy Lance, our former assistant manager, had been working on this project and managing this during some previous staffing changes, and with his departure about six weeks ago, we asked Megan Young, our Recreation Superintendent, if she would take a lead role in managing the relationship with our consultants, which she has done and done a great job with. So, she's here tonight, and in just a moment, we'll ask her to introduce the team as well. Before we did that, though, I want to let you know that at your place, you've got another copy of the master plans. Unfortunately, we did not realize that these were printed in a portrait mode last time and not horizontal, so we provided these tonight just in case you wanted these for easier reading. Nothing has changed, so if you made any notes in your previous version, especially any notes that you want to pass along to us to work into the final document, we'll be glad to collect those afterwards, but both documents will read the same, just one oriented a little differently. Also, at your place tonight, there is a larger printout of just the two park layouts in the event that there's something that we wanted to hone in on. We also have these up separately so that we can pull them up at the presentation podium and zoom in if that makes answering any questions or looking at any details any easier for everyone. So, with that, I will introduce Megan Young, our Recreation Superintendent, and she will introduce our team that's here with us in person and remote tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We are very excited to be at this point in the process with the Yergin and Meadowbrook master plans and have a great team here with us to answer your questions and present some additional information on both the plans and the pro forma information specific to Yergin. Here from McAdams, we have Schwedt and Rachel, and here virtually, we have Philip from Prose Consulting, who will be discussing the pro forma piece in more detail. And from Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources team, in addition to our director, Maria, we also have Katie, our Outdoor Education and Parks Manager, and our incoming Chair, Ernestine, from our advisory board. So, I know we have a lot to jump into, so I'll go ahead and hand it over to Schwedt.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome to you as well.
Hello. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the council members. It's great to see you all this evening again, and we are excited to bring back the master plans Meadowbrook Park and Yergin Park for any additional feedback that you may have. And then we have Philip joining us virtually to share the pro forma findings with us and get some, if you have any questions on that, he will be able to answer that as well. So, can we start the slideshow, Philip? Great, great. Thank you, Philip. So, we just wanted to jump in into the first slide. Philip, if you're next. So, agenda for today is to share with you the master plans for Meadowbrook Park and Yergin Park and get your feedback, answer any questions, and update the documents that we have shared with you so that at the next council meeting, our intention is to adopt these master plans. And then Philip will be sharing the pro forma information that will be also included in the Yergin Park master plan document as an appendix, so the staff will be able to use it as a working document as we move forward with the construction and implementation of these park plans. Next slide, please. All right, so the first park that we are sharing with you here is Meadowbrook Park. As shown on the slide and based on the feedback that we received from you all during our last work session and collaboration with the town staff, we have accommodated a balance of active and passive recreation amenities throughout this park and making sure that there is every, there is something for everyone to enjoy at this park. And as you can see, we have accommodated splash pad component, playground, renovation to the existing clubhouse building, a small community center off of Hebron Church Road, tennis courts, and a small play area at the community center, a small event space area and an amphitheater space, and then variety of trails that would meander through the historic golf course area that would create an opportunity for people to be active using these trails for walking, jogging, and other activities. In addition, we have natural surface trails that would take advantage of the existing woodland area, pump track, and a disc golf course in the woodlands as well. And then we will also have shelters distributed throughout the site that would create rental opportunities for people, for events, and special occasions for their families. Next slide, Philip. Yergin Park is the next master plan on this slide with a focus on fun for the whole family. Yergin Park also supports variety of amenities, including practice soccer fields, a championship field, kids' play areas throughout the park, adventure areas, including the zip line course, nature trails, ropes course, and pump track, and then special events areas, including a large event lawn space with ban shell and a large picnic shelter, along with other components of play areas for kids in that area. On this park also, we are including variety of trails for people to enjoy walking, jogging, and being in contact with nature. In addition, the existing house will be renovated in the future if decided to renovate that, and we would include that as a retreat center or conference center, some special events that might happen at that, at that house. And then the existing pecan grove will be used as a venue for special events for people, wedding events, or family reunions, et cetera. So, with that, if, just wanted to give you a refresher on these master plans, if the council has any questions on these.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, this, I think, looks pretty familiar to all of us in the depiction we have here, even though it's in miniature fashion, I think we get a grasp for the massive nature of the, of the park. So, I will recognize councilmembers at this time for any general observations or questions, and I'll start to my left here with Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a point of clarification on the Yergin, Item C, which was the Preserve House, I know we had discussed moving it up there to the main houses. Where are we on that, or is the game plan to just leave it where it's at?
So, we have, for our next scope of work, we have an architectural consultant onboard, and she is going to do an assessment of these buildings that would help us with figuring out what is the potential for the, for these buildings, to use them on site for some programming, or if the town, I think there was a discussion earlier in the work sessions about moving them somewhere else in the downtown area, so if the town decides to do that, we will be able to help with that decision as well.
That's all I have, right, Ms. Dillinger?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Singleton, I recognize.
I'll just, I'll start on one park and come back on the second round and get another park. I'll start on Meadowbrook. I know because of the historic nature of the property, that has a lot of the existing uses and everything have to stay the same or similar, which we have all agreed to. Something I mentioned for both parks, I'm concerned about is that we don't have a dog park on either one of them. The ones, another one at Lake Benson Park, we have one, we have two in town, one larger and one smaller one, and I know that, you know, we got the opportunity to include it while we're here, maybe not on that area, but somewhere on the area coming in off Hebron Church Road. That's a concern. I'd like, still like to see that. I'll stop there.
Yeah, let me, and I was going to ask, do you want us to focus, I guess, on just one park at a time? Yergin initially, and then we'll circle back around to Meadowbrook? Is that how you?
This is Meadowbrook I was talking about, just because.
Yeah, yeah.
Either one.
Yeah, I guess we can do that, or if we want to go through Meadowbrook first and then we move on to Yergin, so Philip will be also able to share his pro forma findings with us, so we can move on to that.
Okay, yeah, I just want to keep some track, and since Yergin was initially on my screen, yeah, okay. So, all right, Meadowbrook is the focus now, and certainly will give everybody a chance to come back to Yergin as well. So, Mr. Singleton, I'll move, and come back to you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Behringer will give you an opportunity for any questions or comments.
I have the same opinion Mr. Singleton does, that we need a dog park in at least one of these parks, but for right now, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Dillinger?
Just probably a longer term question or concern, and this is for the town too, is the thinking around Country Club Drive and that being a future entrance and that potentially future intersecting with that timber that's going to be extended all the way down that way, potentially over?
To that area, but we can't say would be.
Exactly where?
Right, that's going to probably be led by development.
I just have a little concern about the traffic in probably 10, 15 years on that road, but the other thing is kind of the separation that sort of exists with the three-hole pitch and putt sort of being cut off, and I don't know if there's a way to move that road further towards the property line and have that parking closer in there and have sort of, so that the parks not split up. That kind of just caught my eye just a little bit. I understand, kind of wanted to keep the road a little, so it's not like a cut through, easily cut through, I get that, but just anytime you have a park and kids, you want to minimize the crossings and things like that, so that's all I've got, because those are the thoughts that came.
Okay, yep, we'll circle back. Mr. Vance?
Yes, in reference to Meadowbrook and its historical designation, since the last time we met, have there been any changes that would prohibit any of the current plans that were discussed to change?
No, since the last time we discussed, no plans have changed on the historic status. Still the same.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, and that was one I was just going to touch on. It's pretty obvious that through the research and the work that your company has done, that we are, we're meeting all the historical requirements and, not entities, but processes that we needed to be aware of to preserve and recognize the historical nature of this area, so everybody's satisfied that that's, that's being done for sure, yeah, okay, very, very significant for sure. We can go another round on the Yergin, or, excuse me, or do you want to move to Yergin depiction at this time?
I've got some more questions on Meadowbrook.
Okay, all right, Ms. Singleton, I recognize you.
Just about restrooms. I know we have restroom at the larger shelter and concessions by the splash pad and the putt putt and near the, not the community center, but the clubhouse, and then we have one way down in the bottom left-hand corner of the plan, shelter and restroom, kind of away from everything, and then I'm going to make the assumption that there's going to be restrooms in the community center. Okay. I remember we discussed at the last meeting is the community center is as you come in, but with the event lawn, the amphitheater, and somebody's got to go to the restroom, that's a good little, looks like a good little hall to get to the restroom, and do we need to switch where the community center is and bring it closer up to the event lawn with the restrooms? Just thinking out loud.
I think that's a good question. We can also, there is a large shelter that we are accommodating closer to the amphitheater and event space, so we will look at providing maybe additional restroom amenity in that area.
Okay, the shelter right, right to the left of the event lawn, that shelter?
Yeah.
Okay, because I'm thinking, I can't, I know that event lawn is much smaller than the one at Yergin, excuse me, yeah, Yergin, but it still could have quite a few people there.
Right, right, and if there are programs after hours, it will be helpful to have a restroom building right next to it.
Okay.
So, that will be accommodated as part of our next scope of work to include the restroom.
All right, thank you.
Do, I probably should know this, do we know how the proposed disc golf course, is that the proper terminology for it, I believe, how it's just sort of size and structure compares with any comparable places around? I know early on in the process, a person, I think, who's an avid disc golf player seemed to be concerned that maybe it was small in nature, maybe smaller than, than many others, but I've played disc golf a few times, but I'm certainly not familiar with what's considered to be either standard size or whatever, and I'm not overly concerned about that, but I thought I would at least ask the question. It is a nine-hole course, which I guess is fairly standard in the area. I assume most places here in Wake County don't have 18-hole courses, is that right? They?
It started off, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, it started off as a nine-hole course, the first concept plan we had, but it has since been expanded to 18-hole.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's correct. It will be 18-hole, and because it's wooded area, it will be considered a design build implementation, so the disc golf expert will have to walk the site and figure out the routes that will be most interesting for disc golf users, and that's how it will be implemented.
Okay.
So, the route that you see on our plans is a placeholder for now.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, I do, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think also there could be some confusion in translations, at least one person that talked to both of us about their desire for the size of the course. I know that one of the comparisons that they gave us is significantly smaller than what we're proposing.
Right.
So, I think there could be some perceptions about what this might could actually be and how many acres it's actually using, so that it may be that that is part of the, that may answer part of the concern as well.
Okay, all right, very good, yeah. All right, well, thank you very much for that. Other questions while we're still talking about Meadowbrook? This way, Mr. Dillinger?
Yeah, question on the infrastructure and the sewer, because that was an issue with the potential expense on the one side, and also the disturbing of the, I guess, northern part with the pond. So, is that accounted for in the cost estimates? Because it seems relatively low, it was like half a million or something for infrastructure in the summary, and so I was wondering if that was sort of accounted for in the build-out of making sure, especially where the clubhouse area is, that it has adequate water and sewer or functioning septic at a higher enough level to, you know, accommodate usage.
Right, so as part of our next scope of work for 30% construction drawings, we are taking a deeper look at the utilities, and so the master plan level cost estimate had a decent amount of contingency included because we did not have all the information at that point, but we have already started digging more into that information. We had a meeting last week with the staff and City of Raleigh and other people to figure out where the latest conditions are for the, where we can tap to the sewer line and water line and how to bring it on site. So, all of that information will be folded in with our next scope.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vance, anything else from you, sir?
Not at this moment.
Okay, anything?
Just for my clarification, so basically what we're looking at are, will be the features of both parks, not really going to get into infrastructure tonight, that's going to come back at another time if I hear you correctly.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, shall we focus our attention now more on the Yergin? Does staff have anything else?
I just wanted to make a clarification. I just wanted to check in with the consulting team to find out if while we're on each park, if there are any things from the actual master plan document that council may note of, is this the best time to also take any comments about?
Sure.
The document that goes with the layout?
Yes.
So, before we move to Yergin, if there was anything that a council member noticed in the overall master plan document, we'd also love to get that feedback, and like I mentioned, if anybody has markups or anything that you want to pass along to us, we'll be happy to collect those.
Okay, thank you, John. Hearing none at this time, I guess if we need to come back, we certainly can, but why don't we refocus at this time on the, on the Yergin part and the information we have before us there? Any preliminary comments you wish to make?
Sure, I can just refresh on the amenities that we are providing on this plan. So, we have, as we, as we come in from East Garner Road, we have natural turf fields and synthetic turf fields, so four soccer fields total at the entrance, and then as we come down towards the northern end, we have a championship field that will be a natural turf field for tournaments and special competitions, and then we have a large playground area, basketball courts, splash pad, and an event lawn space that is also part of this northern amenity development. In addition, we also have a prose shop where the alphabet G is located, where people will be able to have some training opportunities and programming for the adventure area amenities, including that zip line course and ropes course, et cetera. The road that's going through the side will be considered a town-owned road, so it will have a connectivity component to the neighboring communities as well. You all have any questions, we can answer those on this park.
Okay, thank you. We talked about on the back of the property, there's a fairly substantial, I guess for lack of a better term, drop-off in that area there. That's, that's being accommodated either to some of the natural terrain or the way the park is being structured, I guess, is that right?
That's correct, so we will be taking. So, we will be taking, we have our survey team collecting the topography data for the site now. So, as part of our next phase, we will be looking at the grids in detail to figure out what implications or changes we might see in the future for constructability perspective.
Okay. And I'll just make one other comment. One of the significant features of this park, as far as I'm concerned, of course, is the proposal to use the pecan orchard and the, the old house to renovate that and to use it for an event facility with a number of possibilities, I guess. I don't know if I saw a cost for the renovation of that, but we can get into some of those details later on, I guess. But that, that intrigues me, and I believe that's consistent with some of the things that council had initially said. And I get the impression, if I read correctly, the, some of the responses, that any number of citizens were excited about the possibility of that area being used for those purposes, I believe. So, with that, I'll start to my right down here and recognize Mr. Vance for any comments or observations he'd like to make.
Yes, just, just going back to the previous meetings that we had, is it correct to assume that the due diligence on the environmental piece has been completed, environmental studies, or does something still need to be done?
The environmental studies have been completed. What we are currently, will be doing is the architectural assessment of the buildings.
Okay.
So, if there are, with the park development, if there are any federal permits that we would require, then we will use the environmental data that we have already completed.
Okay, all right. The next question I have pertains to what was asked earlier in reference to the historical house on C, and I didn't hear exactly what was all going on, because if I remember correctly, we were talking about adjusting that close to the, to the main, the main hall at one time, or adjusting it to that area.
Do you have any feedback, Rodney?
Yeah, there was a couple of possibilities for the house, the smaller house at C that were mentioned, there were nothing definitive decided, but it was decided that an architectural review would be done, just to look at the feasibility of it even being moved. But a couple of things that were thrown out were having it closer to the large house, because it really originated from that area and was moved to where it is now. And then there was also some interest in moving it closer to the Historic Depot by the Historic Society. So, those possibilities were thrown out, or as well as just leaving it where it is. So, so just three possibilities, and nothing's really been decided by council yet.
Okay.
Probably be best to wait until that architectural review, I mean, we have time to do that and go from there.
Okay, thanks. All right, yes. Mr. Dellinger, anything?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, Mr. Behringer?
Just a question about the, the large house. I think I remember reading in the plan that there were some significant deterioration there, or am I mixing that up with something else?
Can you repeat the question for me?
Is there the amount, level of deterioration in the large house? Is there, is that significant or something that can be easily taken care of?
I don't believe we have information, Rodney, do you have any information on that?
Yeah, I was in there today, so I can answer the question partially, I didn't do any, you know, didn't have any tools or anything to look into everything. But I wouldn't say, it's, it's in pretty good shape for the age of the house and the fact that it's been sitting there. There is some water damage in some areas, mainly outside, associated with the siding and where the roof, roof adjoins some of the sidewalls. On the inside, you know, it's a plaster and leath house, so some of the plaster is falling. I think that's just natural deterioration, age, gravity, whatever. Didn't notice any water damage on the inside, on the ceilings or anything, but, you know, it's possible there's some in attic. So, some of the leath has fallen off, the walls and the floor seem to be in pretty good condition from my assessment. But on the outside, some of the trim, and it has an enclosed gutter system, the gutter system is enclosed in the fascia and overhangs, which is different than what today's construction would be. And so, that water is getting inside there, but it is rotting the wood and the gutter system. So, that is one concern, and there is some rot that I've seen around some of the siding, like I said. But, I mean, it's going to take a lot to renovate it, because it's a question of whether that leath has to be taken off in another system, like sheetrock or drywall, a more modern system of a wall covering is used. But I wouldn't, I don't know if I would call it major. Now, I haven't been under the house, so I don't know what the, the joist and the foundation system looked like underneath.
One more question, is that house either on the National Historic Registry, or is it possibly eligible for that designation, or have we investigated at this point?
It's not on the registry, and we talked about having a historic assessment, but not putting it on the registry, because that brings with it a whole lot of other
Right.
regulations and permitting and those type of things. So, we can preserve it without it being on the registry.
Sure.
And go from there unless you want us to go a different route.
That's right.
Okay, you're good?
Good, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Shinglin?
Question again on, I remember we talked last time, you know, we've got lots of small shelters, the big shelter, and we're all grateful for that. I go back to the restrooms again, the ones tucked way to the north, and ones in the middle of the outfitter station. I just wonder about one closer to the, to the ballfields, the, excuse me, the first two sets of fields and that playground, and there's shelters there also, about having a restroom in that area also. Having been at some of these fields in the area, and some, you know, Lake Benson Park only has one restroom, you know, anyway, won't even start on that. But, you know, if you can have, by looking at the pro forma and having tournaments and things going on, and having people out there, and having been at WRAL before, they had the big tournament this weekend, the, one of the tournaments that our team has participated in in the past, restrooms is an issue. So, I'll just mention that. I'll also mention dog park. Again, we've got all this area for people to come out and do things and run and recreate, and I'm still trying to figure out why we don't have a dog park out here. We've got a lot of preserved woodlands, it's like we could unpreserve a small area and make a, make a dog park, that's my opinion, and I've stated it before. I will mention, and I'm just going to mention this just because of this picture right here, I know you had the fences around the turf, and I would want fences around all the fields. We're trying to, you know, that's one of our, our long-range plans is to get fences around our existing multipurpose fields, so I know we want them around all of them. And please make sure when we design these soccer fields, please. A few years ago, at the main one that our older kids play on at South Connor Park, we didn't have any fence behind the goals. And so, if you missed it, it could go down the street behind it, Claymore Drive, and you could go five houses to chase the ball. And then someone who has lived here for many years and coached soccer and refereed, he called me before the last referendum and said, "We need to do something." So, I met him out there and he showed me, and we put the long, tall fences, I don't know how they are. Well, let's make sure we got backstops behind every field. Nobody needs to go into woods chasing a ball where there might be ticks and so forth and so on, and nobody even needs to be hitting anybody's car that they can avoid. Plus, these fields are multipurpose, you could be playing lacrosse or field hockey, and, you know, we just need to be careful, because there's a playground between the two fields, and we need to be careful to make sure we protect any projectile that may be out there. So, it's not just soccer, I know people say things to soccer field, no, they're multipurposes, you know, for all kinds of sports. So, you know, that's just something to, let's get in the weeds a little bit, but I want to make sure that when we, you know, you start working on 30% construction plans, that we have these things already figured into it. And I think, and Mr. Dellinger asked on the last, on Meadowbrook in regards to utilities, utilities here were very fortunate or close by. So, that's, I mean, they got to be run through the park, and that's going to cost a lot of money, but getting them to, to this park and getting them to Yergin, excuse me, Meadowbrook's two different items completely.
Right, yeah, we are, we are looking at the utilities for this park as well, all the items that you mentioned, we have already started thinking about those restrooms and fences. We have, like, design itself with fences and gates.
Okay, great. And question for staff is, I know we're going to have to make improvements on that whole entire side of the road, we'll pick up where the, the White Oak Avenue, Town Homes, whatever, and we'll improve to the end of this property, but we're going to go ahead and plan on improvement to connect to the sidewalk we just put in, are we not? Yeah, I mean, we're going to ride and go on the road all the way down there to the sidewalk we just put in.
We have to put it in front of that un, yeah, typically, we don't do that.
Yeah, the widening going across the other undeveloped property, we'd have to figure out how to, how to handle that, yeah.
Well, unless it sits there and it's undeveloped, and we're trying to connect this to downtown, we need to plan on doing that. I mean, that's just part of it. We, well...
Yeah, it just depends on how that property is going to be built.
We did some of it on, when we did White Deer, the other thing was property, and we went talking, of course, it's a whole lot shorter area, but anyway, if we're going to make connectivity, we need to go ahead and plan connectivity, we can't wait for a developer to come in, unless we're going to be the developer. Anyway, just do that out there.
Thank you, Ms. Shinglin. Let's see, Mr. Matthews, I believe you're next, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very pleased that we are having the inclusive playgrounds at both parks, it's been a big concern of a lot of people I've known, so that is great. And I certainly agree with Gray, you know, with all this land, we certainly can carve out a little place for, for the dogs to get out there and run around. It's not all that big, and they don't need playground equipment, they just need a fenced-in area so they can get out and bond with each other, whatever they want to do. And, but I certainly agree with that, and so, but I think it's, but as I always say about the things that we do, let's make sure we do it right the first time, and not have to come back and explain to the people why we didn't do something. So, and a lot has to do with how we're going to pay for all of this, and I'm very sensitive to that, but as we go into this thing, let's, let's do it right and get it done right the first time. And that's all I would ask. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Matthew, sure enough. All right. Go ahead, yep, yep.
I'll get on the dog park wagon, but, I mean, I know we already have one in that part of town, but the population is just going to keep going up, so you might as well plan for another one. And the pedestrian access is kind of a no-brainer in terms of people being able to walk to the park. I mean, that's outside of sort of the scope of this, but that's for us to consider, that connectivity is the thing that really jumped out, or lack thereof. My questions are sort of on the twofold, one, on the championship field and the idea behind the bleachers and the capacity and how nice, and what makes this a championship field in terms of amenities and capacity so that it could be used for that? And also, there were a lot of comparisons regionally about different amenities in this park with other ones in this surrounding area, and Mr. Singleton probably knows better than I do, but what makes a super-nice, you know, soccer field for an actual invitational event or something like that? And I think that it's not clear on the rendering on the capacity of the seating, which I didn't see anywhere, and how it would be structured so that it's not just bleachers that are uncomfortable, something that really kind of stands out as a championship field. And remember, at one of our planning sessions, we talked about the event lawn and the championship area, and we talked about control, being able to do controlled access, but I don't remember where we landed on that. Is that incorporated into this, or does anyone remember what we decided about when it came to having the option for controlled access and ticketing?
I think we discussed it as well as with concerts and adult beverages, to have to control that, and we did discuss that about having means to secure that area over how we decide to come up with that.
Yeah, I think we talked about gates, but it would be difficult to control the open park access, but we'd have to maybe do it with landscaping, you don't want tall, solid fences around everything, I wouldn't think, but, that could be, that could be tough for open field park.
I mean, for an event lawn, you can put a nice little fence or something, again, it limits our options if we don't plan to have the option to do it, you can't retrofit it, you know, if you don't incorporate it in the initial design. You may incorporate it and never use it, but I think it's something we want to think about as we move forward, and we've got a long time to think about it, just how that would look on the ground, it'd still be accessible when it's not used, whether they're, you know, so that's just, I don't know if anybody else remembers that conversation.
Well, I think Damian was talking about a couple of things, one on that and the championship field, on the championship field, you don't practice on it, that's one thing, you know, it's there for those type of, for games, whether it's a championship or tournament or just games for people playing here. The event lawn, I look at the same wave, I mean, you don't, you don't want to have open access for an event lawn, do you want someone to go out there and start playing a sport with cleats on? That's, I mean, not, not a regular lay, but just go out there and start playing. I don't know if you want to do that. If they're going to play cricket there, that's a little different, because that's what it's designed for, it's, we made it. But again, I think you got to control that, if that's an event lawn, then it needs to be protected.
I think in our conversations, we talked about it being more of an open space for people to just come and hang out, not necessarily sport, play sports on, kind of like over Lake Benson, you've got those open fields.
And you can do that and have still the fence and have the gates open, but you're going to have to monitor it, because we had this issue at Thompson Road Park where we rolled the ball out and let them play, and they tore it all to shreds, and we had to spend fifty or sixty thousand dollars on turf one year. And that was an issue that, that happened, and it's controlled differently now. But that's just something to think about. And again, if you're going to have events and it's ticketed, I mean, how are you going to access it? How are you going to control the access? I think that's something we've got to consider.
Well, I think too, that when we start seeing the design work and then the phasing, I think some of these questions might, even if you came up with an answer tonight, they might change based on the phasing plan, because we may determine that what we can build at certain times may facilitate a natural breakpoint to add elements of control or elements of future design later. So, I think, I think tonight we want to make sure that everybody's good with the concepts, and then as we come back with the, the next phase of the design, we can pick some of these topics up to say, "Okay, what does that mean if we wanted to move forward to a phasing plan?" And if, if the event lawn's in phase one, which it may or may not be, then we'd have to answer that question then, but if the event lawn's going to be in phase five, then we've got a lot of time to try out using phases one through four before we make the final call. So, I think it's, it's, there's a balance between answering it upfront and not missing an opportunity, and answering it too tightly upfront and locking ourselves out of making use of the first phases of the park too.
I don't, I don't remember when I was reading through it, seeing that in these master plans, so I want to make sure it's back on the table as the direction we prefer, maybe potentially, even if we don't answer the question, so that when you're, we get to the design, we don't have forgotten that, "Oh, yeah, that's what we thought we wanted to do," because it may have been in here, but I don't remember seeing it. So, I just want to make sure the option for us is always there in, in our conversation, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think, sorry, yeah, I think we will be considering that, I think once we are getting into the details of how the championship field should look like, whether we want to include permanent seating instead of portable bleachers that can be moved around, we will be taking a deeper look at that and also shade for the championship field. So, if it's going to be used during the daytime, what kind of shade structures do we need? And so, we will be diving deeper into that once we start our detailed design for that, those particular areas.
Okay, thank you.
We've also been having a conversation at a staff level about other parks that we already own and the desire to have ticketed events in them. The challenge is, it's almost impossible to cordon off a small part of a widely open public park to do an event that is ticketed. You know, if it's going to be a concert, you can just go beyond the fence and hear it. So, I think there, there also come down to a practical discussion of just what type of controlled access events are even, are even practical to do at something like this event lawn, because you don't have to buy a ticket to just stand in the woods at the, just beyond it, or stand on the path and hear it too. So, that's a recent conversation we've just had, that those kind of things are hard to control, have ticketed events mixed with this much open use as well.
That is a challenge in these kinds of parks. Reminds me of the first time I ever went to see the Chicago Cubs, and the people on the apartments across the outfield line out there had a pretty good seat of the, of the stadium there without paying anything, but that's, that's a side issue.
Well, you know, Red Hat and Apple Theater downtown Raleigh.
Yeah.
That's controlled access, but you can stand in the sidewalk and hear the concert.
Yep, sure can, yeah.
And parking deck up there, and you see the full things.
Yeah, but hopefully, we don't have to put fences up as high as they do to keep you from seeing it, because that's gonna defeat the purpose of some of the, the natural part of this bar.
Yes, I agree, I agree, I agree with that, I agree.
Mr. Vance, I wanted to come back around to you, sir.
Uh, don't have any questions.
Okay, all right. Oh, good inquiries here, and Dame, Mr. Dallinger, you got your question answered.
Yes.
That's been noted, I believe, okay. Uh, all right, are we ready to-
Mayor, I had, I had one more comment to say about the house, just to make sure everybody has a good understanding. So as we look at the house, we're thinking about it as a former residential. If we decide to use it as an event center, there may be some, um, commercial code and historical code items that come into play, so it's not just a matter of putting it back to where it is. There might be some things we have to upgrade and, and do structurally to make it, uh, an event center. So I just wanna make sure. And ADA would come into play in some areas. Um, because it's historic, there might be some things that we would be, um, not required to do, but there's gonna be some that we're gonna have to upgrade, so.
Okay, point well made, thank you.
Just wanted to add one additional, uh, comment, if, if you don't mind.
Please.
I just wanna encourage everyone to keep in mind that a master plan is a living document. It's not set in stone, design decisions, aside from the high-level concept, aren't necessarily being made at this time. Um, when we say a living document, it means you're adopting an aspirational vision for this, the higher-level concept, the park amenities, the general idea of what we want this space and this place to be. And so we have established, uh, various milestones into our design process. It's usually a thirty percent, sixty percent, and a ninety percent set of construction drawings, and at every milestone, we have an opportunity to make more and more of those detailed design decisions. So don't feel like adopting this plan is gonna lock you in to every single detailed design decision. I want you to feel empowered to continue, um, to comment and know that the design's gonna evolve over time, and there'll be plenty more opportunities, uh, to provide input on some of those details.
Thank you very much, it's a nice-
And we appreciate that. I think after our last bond referendum, and we didn't have as much, I, I like your quote, aspirational vision, that's good. Um, we didn't have too much aspirational vision last time. We had some vision, but not quite as much as we need to, so lesson learned. So I appreciate what you said, because you're right, it's a living document. We just wanna make sure everything gets heard, so as we go along, it's, it's possibly incorporated into the plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, anything else, counsel, on this? Okay, uh, staff, anything else?
Just similar question, just the same. If there's anything in the actual master plan document that you have tonight, or that you find to share with us, let us know that as well.
Okay, all right. You good?
Yep, sounds great. Appreciate your comments and feedback on the two parks, and we will, um, as we continue moving towards our thirty percent, and as Rachel said, um, continue to get your feedback, um, on, as we move towards the implementation of these parks. So I will turn it over to, um, Philip, so he's going to walk us through the pro forma findings, uh, for the Jürgen Park.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, can you all hear me?
Can hear you, yes.
Fantastic. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Welcome to the Garner team, Murray. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you and discuss this exciting opportunity. As part of our process with the project, we met with town staff to define the approach and build out principles of, uh, the plan for the operations, and here is what, uh, we have for those principles. The staff saw this as being part of a regional destination for sports, uh, as well as high-quality athletic experience for both local, uh, community users as well as visitors. Further develop the unique brand of the town. Our approach is based off of the full build-out, and that the town will own and operate the facility, looking to contract out where you can until staff are hired. In the same fashion, we've developed, uh, assumptions for the project as well. League play at existing fields and, at Jürgen Park, once developed. Weekends, mostly for tournaments, local will play on existing fields on tournament weekends. Stormwater management will be addressed during the construction document process. Fees are commensurate with market rates for the type of amenities, and that the general state of the pandemic will be resolved and economies recover, and that we would use existing cost recovery model that we had found as far as the fee structure ordinance In addition to, um, all of the assumptions and principles, we had to place the amenities in buckets of similarities. So we've created zones, um, as we call them, for the site. So the adventure zone, the zone which you see in the center at the lower part of the screen, consists of outfitter station, the restrooms, zip line course, nature trails, ropes, course, the pump track, three small shelters, parking lot of approximately a hundred and seventy spaces, overlooks, platform camping, a roundabout with public art. The athletic zone consists of natural turf, multi-use fields, synthetic turf, multi-use fields, small playground, large shelter with restroom, skills practice area, retaining and climbing wall, parking lot of approximately three hundred and twenty-two spaces, bioswell, public art, uh, and surrounding areas. The championship zone, um, consists of the natural turf, multi-use championship field, basketball courts, bleachers, restroom, concession, shelter, spray ground, inclusive playground, small shelters, outdoor stage, the event lawn, a fitness course, parking lot of around two hundred and twenty-four spaces, and public art. The passive zone consists of the historical main home preservation, pecan grove, public art, parking lot, pres-, uh, the preserve house, trails, uh, preservation woodlands, wetlands, streams, stormwater pond, and educational signage. When we looked at how best to maintain the amenities planned for the site, we also looked at the existing standards that the town uses for maintenance, and it has many of the best practices, uh, that we typically like to see for maintenance, including preventative maintenance. This image shows us the area of the park, that, and the level of maintenance needed to achieve the best outcome without over-maintaining from the park concept. So level-one areas receive the highest level of maintenance, level-two areas receive a moderate level of maintenance, and the level-three areas receive a lower level of maintenance. And as you see here, we've defined the maintenance on the left, and I've given you an example of the operational standards, uh, and the level of maintenance within the plan. It follows the same best practices, as I said, we found within public works. However, there were some amenities that were not necessarily present, such as the synthetic turf within, uh, the maintenance plan. With public works being accredited, there is already best practices approached in place, uh, and again, utilizing those and building upon those to maintain the site was the goal. Through discussions and feedback, we've included the own and operate model, and the own and outsource model for potential staffing needs. We'll run through these, uh, with pros and cons of each, and then we'll go into the staffing needs. The first approach is to own and operate the facility. Owner assumes responsibility for the land as well as for all assets. In many instances, the operations can be incorporated into the existing structure with additional staff. The pros and cons, pros are that the organization assumes total control of the outcomes, a higher degree of independence to making decisions about the facility and changes. It can be incorporated into the structure, including maintenance, and financial control of the facility, uh, remains with the owner. As far as the cons, um, it can create a new agency if that were a chosen outcome, as well as dividing up smaller sites, um, leads to inefficiency as they are harder to divide responsibilities. Responsiveness to business practices in a government setting, such as refunds, hiring specialized personnel, if not already on staff, marketing both local and regionally to promote the hospitality and the added value to attract regional tournaments and visitors, and balancing the local and regional use to achieve the outcomes if they become political. Sorry, didn't forward. Area. For the own and outsource model, the pros are that an RFI process to determine who has the interest will also help you determine who is one of the best partners for such an endeavor to outsource, uh, such as we'll use the, um, the adventure zone and the high ropes as an example. Making sure that they have the capabilities to achieve the outcomes that the town is looking for, and align their resources with the local community need will be an important component. There are proven models of own and outsource, uh, to follow from other endeavors. You'd be limiting the responsibility and the financial commitment overall. You'd be able to establish profit sharing with those partners for the revenue that they generate. Ultimately, the benefit of outsourcing allows the owner to play to their strengths and outsource the areas that are not considered a strength. The cons for outsourcing, if partners are not in concert with the town and the outcomes that are trying to be achieved, it can make for a difficult endeavor moving forward to meet all of the outcomes, meaning they have to fully commit to the partnership. It also limits the degree of independence when making decisions about the facility, especially if those decisions are capital in nature and require certain areas, uh, to be closed, uh, for construction. Also, responsiveness may not be as appropriate as in-house staff for the community, and these can also become political very quickly. Outsourcing can take on many different shapes, including a multi-pronged approach, playing to each partner's strengths. So it's not as simple as own and operate, or own and have someone manage the entire site. In many instances, it's more of a multi-pronged approach when it comes to outsourcing, especially when you're playing to your strengths and looking for a partner that has strengths in areas that the town may not. These are typically seen in partnership categories of public-public, public-private, and public-not-for-profit partnerships, which I know that you are already aware of from other endeavors. So when you look at all of the opportunities for contracting services, we have deep cleaning, specialized repairs, programming, whether those be athletic instructors or a fitness instructor to contract out with tournament organizers, as well as the adventure outfitter, concessions and vending service, refuse pickup, sports fields, lighting, routine maintenance, HVAC, routine maintenance, those types of things as well, or critical repairs when they need to be replaced. From the park concepts, we've added five full-time staff in the areas of mostly maintenance, uh, that would be lead park maintenance for that site, building maintenance technician to assist with all of the structures, as well as event supervisor. That's actually, um, one where, uh, current position could be promoted to supervisor, that's the events coordinator, uh, taking on the additional responsibility, and then also park maintenance workers, uh, two full-time. We have part-time staff, one in recreation and one person in maintenance currently for the site as well. As part of the process, we conducted a similar provider analysis to look at all of the amenities that exist in the Jürgen Park concept. What we found from a parks and recreation standpoint is that there are twenty parks and recreation departments. County parks have most similarities with the offerings proposed within Jürgen property, or Jürgen Park. Few departments with these services in full combination, meaning you have a smattering of services for most of the local municipality, um, parks and recreation, uh, departments such as towns and cities, but when it comes to the county, they really have a larger combination of all of the services. However, by bringing this closer to your residence, uh, you're actually increasing access to those types of amenities that we have identified. In addition, we looked at the athletic associations, and we found twenty-four of them using the rectangular multipurpose fields. We found sixty-two field locations with over a hundred and seventy-nine fields, including twenty-five of those are sites with three-plus fields. Those are the sites that are most applicable for tournaments, uh, such as what we looked at for the Jürgen Park. In addition, there are thirty-seven private venues to this small list of, uh, public and not-for-profit venues. So when we looked at wedding providers or wedding venue providers, it was from the idea that the pecan grove had the potential to be a good location for weddings, um, with shade, uh, maybe with a, an arbor that, or a pergola that you enter underneath, kind of setting that stage. And so we wanted to take a look at this in a little bit more depth to understand how many other locations were available and what were the price ranges. So the venues you see here are reasonably priced and are, um, either a facility provider with just the rental of the facility, but no actual setup or assistance in the actual wedding itself, or they have a package the wedding provides, and I'll use the Jürgen Park property as an example. The pecan grove has an opportunity to make the correlation between the benefits of pecans and the benefits of marriage, and as part of that, that could be a package that would be offered where in addition to the location and setup, there would also be, uh, a bag of pecans for people to take with them, the remembrance of what the connection is between the pecan and marriage as well. And so those are the types of packages that other, uh, agencies also have and provide. And that's in addition to the thirty-seven private venues, which are mostly full-service, meaning customized weddings on their site, um, from start to finish, having somebody on staff to see them through the entire, uh, day's activities, uh, as well as full cleanup once, uh, complete. So the prices for those are much higher than what you would see in public or not-for-profit venues, looking at a range of anywhere from fifteen hundred to almost twelve thousand dollars for a wedding at those sites. We also looked at platform camping, which is unique, and currently, no known providers in the area. There are other providers that deal with camping opportunities, either with cabins or in treehouses, but not platform camping. We also took a look at high ropes, which are more common in the area. Due to the nature of this business and the liability, contracting out with a partner in this endeavor is a best practice and does seem to be a case for a lot of the similar providers. This means that the partner with the expertise will inspect and keep up the standard of the equipment for safe and enjoyable visitation to the site group. Here we have the pump track and the cricket findings. We observed nine pump tracks in the area, and there is room for more in the market. Pump track riders are typically looking for new locations and new challenges, and that's exactly what this site would provide for those individuals seeking that. In addition, cricket is just beginning to gain more traction in the United States. We see a couple, uh, handfuls of locations within the service area, uh, during this similar provider analysis, but the fields are more multipurpose open space than an actual true cricket pitch. There is an opportunity here to be the premier location for cricket with portable bleachers that could be put in, uh, the area for visitation. And to one of the council members' points, typically, one of the biggest things that you see, um, when you think of a championship stadium, is the, the area and the amenities that exist for visitors, spectators, if you will, uh, in between time. Having the playground, the splash pad, uh, the basketball courts within close proximity, uh, we believe it is good, um, and great to help activate that site. However, um, there's an opportunity to do the same thing in more of a portable fashion with cricket, and again, be the premier site in your location. So the summary of findings, elevated overnight accommodations, we found one vendor within the service area, even though there were more vendors, uh, that we looked at as well too, because it was- we looked at as well too, because it was such a unique opportunity, we wanted to see what else was in a much larger area to see if there was anything else that was more comparable. And unfortunately, we did not find one, but again, one in the local service area. Rectangular fields, again, 27 natural grass, six turf, four combined, 25s that are not fully defined, but a total of 25 areas, locations that have three-plus fields. A total of 62 locations with 179 fields. Now with cricket, we found 151 teams in your area with one league and 10 cricket grounds. And so again, we see there being an opportunity there. As far as wedding venues, 11 parks and recreation departments and 37 providers with a wide range of costs associated with those. Adventure courses, we did find nine of those, and as same pump tracks, but one public track in the region, and two public tracks are farther out, about a five-hour drive. And so we've got all of them listed from that 16-minute drive all the way out to the four-and-a-half to five-hour drive, so that you're aware of what else is in the area. So when we look at the pro forma, we have to do a little bit of work to build out the pro forma. And our overall approach to park operations is staffing, the staffing that's needed to fully operate the facility, including new and existing staff. In addition, contracting out for specific services is also included to help develop the experiences at the site until staffing can be achieved. Now, this does not include maintenance, as maintenance is within the town and utilization of town employees for contracting out, not necessarily for critical replacement or specialized units that need service. We currently have the operations at an 85% cost recovery based on programs within the site design, and this is in line with the cost recovery that currently exists within the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Services Department that we found from the online fee structure. We are also looking at a forecast, being able to forecast the pro forma out for six years. We looked at developing unit costs for maintenance, as well as the tournament calculator. The tournament calculator you see below, and it's a table that's used to define the fields and account for the capacity. We've calculated the tournaments, local rentals, tournament rentals, average visitors, calculated by the number of players per team as well. We've also calculated for youth sports, showing that the increase in teams and visitors, since there are fields that have the ability to hold 12 and under fields, the tune of five per regular-sized multipurpose field. From what we see, weekday use is at 64%, Monday through Thursday, and tournaments 36% with the use of Fridays to set up and prepare for those tournaments. For weekend use, we see a local use of 17% and 83% for tournaments. The pro forma has categories or buckets, if you will, listed to the left for revenues and expenditures. The programs and events listed there is what are local programming, and rentals are also local rentals for field space or shelters as well. The expenditure bucket categories, oh, I'm sorry, I missed the tournament rentals. Tournament rentals are utilizing the tournament organizer and basically renting the fields for all of the games that need to be played in order to complete the tournament. Other is, as far as revenue, is from contracts with outfitters, profit sharing as well as revenue from concessions. The expenditure buckets are built out similar to municipal finance, so as you see, personnel services, supplies, and routine maintenance, other services and charges, and capital outlays. Total, we have the site achieving 84% cost recovery at the beginning and ramping up to 90%. It is very important that we revisit this pro forma with the inflation that we're currently seeing this year. Currently, inflation is over 4% and expected to reach around 12% at its peak, which could be in the next couple to few years. Accounting for inflation up to this point is between 2% to 3% annually as part of the pro forma, and those are the increases that you would see as far as the expenses are concerned. Excuse me. In addition, we recognize that there are sponsorship opportunities with the site as well too. This is calculated for amenities that have the ability to be named or have sponsorship. Would not included the naming rights for the park, as we felt it was to be named Jürgen Park, considering all of our discussions, but naming the entire site is typically your largest form of sponsorship for parks and recreation. These are not included in the revenue, as this revenue should be used to repair and replace anything that may be needed as the site begins to increase in usage. It's good to use these funds to keep the facility in the best shape as possible, and also that the fields for synthetic turf need to be replaced typically around eight to 10 years, and so utilizing the sponsorship to replace those fields at the appropriate time would be a great utilization for sponsorship. With that, we thank you for the opportunity to come before you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you for that presentation. Just a quick question that probably doesn't need to be asked, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. In your assessment and looking at all the data that you just shared with us there, does it, do you guys look at the availability of housing, hotel rooms within a certain proximity of the area?
No, as far as the similar provider, we did not look at the available hotels within the area. That would be something that we would see more as part of an economic impact analysis, which was not part of the scope.
All right, council, what questions do you have here? I'll start with Ms. Beringer.
I have no questions right now. I just have a comment that it's both exciting and overwhelming to look at this.
Okay.
It's a new day.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, I noticed on the, we talked about sponsorship, that says full build-out. When you were talking earlier on the pro forma revenues and expenditures, first year through six years, I'm assuming this is at full build-out, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I think we all realize that with the projected cost of this park, this is going to be phased in some shape, form, or fashion. So that's why I was just curious if your numbers are, on the pro forma revenues, expenditures, is it full build-out? So if this park is phased, we want to realize these type of revenues until the park is completely built.
Correct.
That's all for right this minute.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dillinger?
Just to sound like Mr. Singleton, you know, if tournaments is going to be such an integral part of the revenue generation and focus of the park, around those fields will need more, maybe a little bit more open space for teams, because you have large teams, and maybe a few more shelters that differ, maybe on the opposite side. Again, as we get into the design, but I think just accommodating space for large groups of kids and families waiting to get on the field and in between, all that kind of stuff, would make sure there's adequate space for that, so they're not in the parking lot and that sort of thing. But that's my only comment.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. It's just, Ms. Beringer said a lot of numbers here to absorb, but it's good we're getting into this type of depth, as the potential income, sponsorship, the most important, the full build-out, that was a strong question to ask. It's overwhelming, but it's going to be exciting, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. And Mr. Vance?
No questions, no questions at this time.
Okay. All right, staff, anything to add?
I don't have anything.
I think one of the questions that no one has mentioned, but with staff, just wanted to make sure that council is comfortable with the percentages of local use and tournament use that at least are used for the basis of the pro forma, because this would be one of the first facilities Garner had that we're relying on or we're planning for a fairly significant use that is not just localized use. And so I think that's, we asked the consultant to make sure they highlighted this here, which he did a good job of, just wanted to revisit that and reiterate that we're on the right track in terms of understanding that this is a different kind of facility, and with that, council is agreeable to us looking at a different kind of operations model.
I guess my question along those lines is, you know, by the time this is built out, Garner will probably have a population of about 60, 65,000 people. And so the question is, are, that type of revenue generation, is it, are we looking purely like external entities coming in, or are we also relying on the internal growth of leagues in the town to then rent the facilities? Because I know we have leagues that do that now, and you know, so you're serving different populations, you're serving more local, are growing, are grown, local population versus everyone coming in and leaving.
Right. Yeah, I think that's a good point. I'll defer to Philip just to give a more technical answer though, but I think it's a good distinction to make about what makes up the tournament usage and how much of that could be localized tournament usage versus travel tournaments. Is that, am I hitting the right, yeah?
Yeah. So, thank you. There's no difference in the revenue to be generated if, for that number of tournaments, if they're local or if they're visitors from out of town. The rental and the revenue should still be the same on par with the amount that's generated. Now, economic impact standpoint, if you are having more local tournaments, then you'll have less economic impact for the rest of the community. But we do account for local rentals for teams to have exhibition games, as well as practices or clinics and things of that nature, as well as local revenue from general recreation. Your tournaments are the highest revenue potential as far as the rental for the fields because of the number of teams that will be generated. If you can generate the same number of teams locally, then again, those should still be the same revenues coming in.
Thank you.
Can somebody tell me, and Mr. Singleton may have some thoughts on this, but so, you know, I understand, I think, the concept of bringing in tournaments and would be a nice revenue source, bring in visitors, but what percentage of the park would continue to be useful to the general public in the other areas there that would make the park usable even when tournaments are going on? Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
I do, sir, if I may. So for local use, the playgrounds, the splash pad, the event space, as well as the pump track, the high ropes and challenge course, and the historical property as well for weddings and such, so all of those should still be relatively open. However, to, one of the points that was made by a councilman previously, is that those spaces are also going to be somewhat shared spaces with current design because of the number of teams that would be at the park location. Those tend to be the common gathering spaces as well.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I also think, Mayor, that if you're having a tournament, then you're not going to have, you're not going to plan some type of concert on the event lawn or cricket match at the same time.
Right. But I'm talking about people who casually just use it at their own leisure and would still have access to it.
Well, I mean, think when they play, they're playing games on Saturday in Centennial Park, people have access to other parts of the park, and that's a little different because all the fields are in one spot.
Right.
But South Garner Park, I mean, you've got, I mean, I got you out there one night, you had them practicing softball, baseball, and soccer at the same time.
Yeah.
And cheerleading in the outfield.
That's right.
So you had all that going on at one park at the same time. So it can happen. It's, I think some of the good things they've shown here is adequate parking. Mr. Dillinger brought up a good point about where teams can gather, and there are some opportunities based on where parking is, just, I'm just looking at this roughly, you know, when you have fences back here behind these fields, teams to gather and access to fields, there are some places there for it. And different parks have better access than others. It's just, those things that you think about to have space for the players to come in and out, just like when we did the rec center and talked about ballgames, if you had a tournament there and you had games going on at the same time, you got the teams on the courts, you got teams that are going to take the court, you got parents in the bleachers, you got parents sitting outside. I mean, it's the same type of thing of rotating and working a schedule where you're not all starting everything at the same time and finishing at the same time. Well, then you got trouble.
Right.
But that's a programming issue that the Parks and Rec staff know all about. They'll take care of that.
Mayor, I think we're very fortunate also that this park is in hope to, soon to be walkable proximity to, but easily drivable proximity to Garner Rec Park, and then the open space at our new recreation center. So even if someone came up to the park not knowing it was primarily going to be full for a tournament that day, the good thing is our citizens wouldn't have to go very far to have other places for recreational opportunity this really close by. So we are fortunate that the proximity of this is close to some other amenities that people might choose to use.
I agree, I agree. Of course, if, you know, if you have a park that's pretty much exclusively used for athletic teams and fields, then it has that function, a park like this obviously has many functions for people to use, and so it would seem to be a shame, and some, I'm sure would be disappointed to say, well, you know, since you've got a tournament this weekend, I can't go over and get on the pump track or other areas that, you know, people would want to use. And so I'm hearing that it's feasible to think you could still use some other portions of the park that wouldn't be interfered with by the tournaments. Okay. Anybody else? Okay, it's Philip, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else you have, sir?
No, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the pro forma with you all, and would love to answer any other questions that you may have, even if they're at a later time and not necessarily to see.
Okay, and I suspect there will be some, you know, a later time as we move forward on this. To quote Ms. Beringer, there's a lot of information to take in, and this pro forma document was kind of an interesting read, even if it was tedious, but a lot of information in there, and probably some of the municipalities around us are already experiencing some of this because of the expansion of their parks program. So hopefully, we're going to soon be in a mode where we can join with some of that. Okay? Nothing else? What's next after this, Mr. Phillips' presentation?
So this is, this concludes, unless there's any wrap-up the consultants have. Do you have anything that you wanted to wrap up?
Sure, I just wanted to say, thank you for the opportunity to be here again and talk with you all on these park projects. And as we move forward, like Rachel said, it's our aspirational goal, so we can, we would like to request at our next council meeting, so we adopt these master plan documents, and then we will be moving forward with the details and addressing some of this feedback into that, into the detailed design as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
And let me just say, it's, Zoom works okay, and we see Philip there pretty well, but it's nice to see you in person and to have you come and visit with us again. We hope you can continue to do that.
Same here, sir. It's great to see everybody in person, for sure.
Sure, thank you.
Listen, I can, and I'm serious about this, if you can work in the words aspirational vision in both these master plans, I'm serious. That's good. If I was smart enough, I'd have said that quote you asked me to put in there, but I'm not that smart.
Park, aspirational park.
We've got a name for it, don't we? Yeah, but that's good, yeah.
We'll call the event, the event lawn, the aspirational event lawn.
I think, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, yeah.
What we can do is, we've heard a lot of different comments, but just to make sure everybody's on the same page is, we'll work with the consultant and Megan to probably put together a summary of what we think we've heard of things. I think there's agreement that the concept is good, but there's some things that we might want that the concept is good, but there's some things that we might want to add. For example, like at Meadowbrook, we talked about a dog park and another restroom. So just to make sure we're all on the same page as they kind of finalize the last concept. And we'll, we'll get that to you and try to get some feedback just to make sure there's nothing else we need to be thinking about.
Rodney, I think though, the thought was if council was willing to, given that these are the aspirational visions, to go ahead and move forward with adoption of these so that we can start using these as they are with our bond marketing that's going to start very soon and taking all those notes you just mentioned and making sure those are documented for design. So if that's, if that's okay to suggest, I didn't know if that would, that would allow us to move forward.
Not doing another drawing, but just know that.
Right. But if council's comfortable with it, we would go ahead and bring this back at an upcoming session for adoption, just so we can be using adopted concept plans in our bond education program.
You want us to do it tonight?
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to, obviously the action listed on the agenda is consider recommending adoption of master plans, provide feedback on the operating pro forma. But I don't, I didn't know if we were going to bring that back with any other modifications at our, this would be the first meeting in June, wouldn't it?
That's the reason I mentioned is the first meeting in June is next Tuesday. And there'll be two more weeks. I know you were trying to start with the bond referendum, so I mean, the longer we push it out, the longer you don't have the formal plan.
It's next week, June is next Tuesday.
Yeah. It's two weeks. It's two weeks.
We have two weeks.
But still, we can do it.
I see the words. I see the pro forma.
Yeah, we might as well do it.
Yeah. I'm sorry, you're right. Next Monday is the third Thursday.
And so you're adopting a final version of the document. Is there anything else from the consultants that, that, I don't think there's anything else we really need to do prior to bringing it back for adoption though?
I think, I certainly think, I'm hearing, we, the council agrees conceptually with what's been presented and has no significant changes. But if we, if we want to wait to vote then on basically, I guess what we're calling a final document, then that's what we'll be doing. Is that right? At our June meeting?
The pleasure of the council. But that way you would be adopted.
If we're going to incorporate, it's a living document.
Yeah.
And what's here is enough to go along with bond stuff. And we can, I'm ready to vote.
I am too.
All right. Well, if somebody wants to make a motion, we'll have to entertain that sure enough. So.
Mayor, we approve the master plans that have been provided to us as living, breathing documents for Meadowbrook Park and for Jürgen Park.
Excellent. Motion made and properly seconded. Any questions before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none. So, okay. I guess still at that June meeting, if there are any further, I call it tweaking, I'm not sure that's the right term, that needs to be brought back, you'll bring it at the first meeting in June? Is that right?
Well, you can, I think at this point is what we're going to work with. And if you have any other comments, you can just forward them to me and we'll figure out the best way to handle it. We may not need to bring it back to a meeting.
Okay. All right. All right. So let me see. It's just beyond 6:30. And are we finished with our consultants? And we had.
Yes, we are.
Philip there looks like she's anxious to go eat dinner or something. I'm not sure. So, and we are too, I guess, Philip. But thank you for your indulgence, sir. So unless there's a need to take up the other item, I'm going to suggest we, we take another item at this time. I think Ms. Ashley, food available out there? Is that right? Okay. So it's set to go. So council, are you ready to break for dinner?
Let's do it.
Okay. I'm going to declare that we're in dinner adjournment.
Okay, I'm going to call our meeting back to order after our dinner recess. And we're now ready for item two. And I'll thank the council for their active discussion on item one. Hopefully, we've finished that up for now. We'll be hearing some more on that in a future meeting, I'm sure. So, Mr. Manager, I believe you are leading this discussion on item two. Questions for bond referendum, sir?
Yes, and John and I are going to tag team on this. And we just kind of wanted to, after talking to our consultants and our bond council, just make sure we have a good understanding of, and make sure council has a good understanding of the bond questions and the wording for that, and you know what that means, and what it includes, what it doesn't include. And so, we put the questions in front of you here, and we're just going to go through them one by one and just talk about them a little bit, and then use what we talked about last time. John just passed out. That's what it looked like last time we spoke to you, but then it's going to be configured a little differently from that, and we wanted to talk through that. So, John's going to take the first one, the street and sidewalk.
So, our street and sidewalk bond question, so the bond questions are on page four of your agenda packet. The street and sidewalk bond improvements wording is very similar to what it was in 2013. It could even be exact, I didn't compare it. But again, these bond questions are based off the wording that the bond, we rely on the bond council to provide the wording that meets the state statutes and any of the other regulatory guidance that we have for issuing debt. So, the bonds will be for the purpose of providing funds together with any other available funds for constructing, reconstructing, widening, and improving street and sidewalk improvements for the town inside and outside its corporate limits, including without limitation, construction, reconstruction, and installation of sidewalks, landscaping, street lighting, streetscaping, lighting bridges, bicycle lanes, curb and gutter, curbs and gutter, culverts and drains, other drainage improvements, traffic controls, and other transit improvements. Also, the acquisition of related land, rights of way, equipment. And so, one point that I want to make here is you see the word drainage improvements and culverts and drains. So, we've talked about previously that some stormwater facilities that are a part of roadwork projects can be covered within the street and sidewalk bond question. But what we can't do is cover the general stormwater program that we've all been talking about looking for, a way to fund. So, I'll get to that in a moment, but just wanted to pause there and just see if there's any questions about the wording of that bond question, with the exception of any questions about the wording of that bond question, with the exception of the further conversation about stormwater.
So, here on the culverts and drains and other drainage improvements, that would be related to any transportation improvements that would be made?
Or, or a situation in which a drainage system or culvert is compromising a street and sidewalk project. So, if the pipe was failing under a road, we could take care of that through streets and sidewalk bond funds, which we did several times in the 2013 bonds. We had unfunded projects that were compromising streets, and we add, council chose to add those.
Right. The ones in Greenbrier in particular, we can think of the two or three.
Yes, Chair, I thought it was two or three.
Cindy and Susan and.
Susan Drive, yes.
And Susan Drive, Susan Drive, and one more.
Yeah, and so, we did those through the street and sidewalk bonds. But when we reached out and asked, could we do some of the ones after our study came back, bond council advised that we could not because they were not compromising or considered an integral part of the roadwork. So, if you look at the sheet I handed out, the street and sidewalk total there, we will have to pull the stormwater funds out into a separate bond question. And so, knowing that that was fairly likely that council would wanna consider that, and we didn't really have other options at the time, we went ahead and had them draft a stormwater bond question. So, if we were to move forward with this as it is tonight, then that blank on stormwater at the end would have 2.95 million in it, and we reduced the street and sidewalk number 27 million by 2.9 million. So, the stormwater question down at the end is pretty obvious there, but further constructing and equipping various improvements to the town's natural and structural stormwater and drainage system, including without limitation erosion control, drainage culverts, outfalls, and the acquisition of any lands and so forth, like the other one. So, that gives us the wider ability to do what we consider sort of our more traditional stormwater projects, like the ones already identified in the study. And as we all know, if we do a further study, there's gonna be more of those to come. So, I think the thought council had was that including some amount in the bonds gave us time to do some of the immediate repairs necessary while we think through the creation of a stormwater enterprise fund for later. Since we drafted this question, though, we have received some preliminary guidance for the ARPA funds that are coming, and it does look like that stormwater would likely be an allowable use for those funds. So, a question that we will have to find and figure out with council prior to the resolution you will adopt in the, at the second meeting in June, as to whether or not we want to do the existing stormwater projects using the proposed ARPA funds, which we haven't received yet, or keep a bond question on the bonds. And if we can do some work with the ARPA funds, and then, this would give us more of seed funding down the road to continue doing that work. There's also potential legislation right now that might limit or inhibit us to some degree, starting our stormwater utility. And so, the, including that in the bond and using some ARPA dollars might just be sort of a protection plan for that, but it does add a question to your bond referendum.
Do we think we'll, no, by then? I think Ms. Jones may have attended. I, I didn't get a chance to attend the league presentation on this, but my question was gonna be, I don't know what instructions are out there, but will we likely have firm instructions by the time, I guess, we're having to finalize this?
Which we have to finalize this in June?
Yeah. That's an unknown question. The guidelines are out. The league, the National League of Cities has lobbied to alter some of, and well, ask clarifying and to also expand some of the categories for municipalities. So, we're waiting to hear on that.
But I think in the case of stormwater, which is the only thing I think this about right now, it is likely to only broaden our use of it for stormwater versus restricting. On the other hand, we've talked about potentially doing some expansions of our water or sewer system with some of those dollars. The guidance that came out there did not give us some of the specifics, and that's an, that's an opportunity that we're not sure whether that'll get more restrictive when further guidance comes out, or more expansive when it comes out.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And you'll adopt these preliminary finding resolutions in June the 22nd, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if we'll have all of our.
Probably not, I mean, I just don't have an answer.
ARP funds at that time or not?
Right, okay.
We may get the first, what are they calling it, tranche before all of the guidance is out, although the state, I don't believe, has received the money yet. Once the state receives the money, they have 30 days to disperse it to all the municipalities.
We also don't have the revised numbers for Garner.
Right.
We haven't received a direct calculation from the state, only the original estimate that we had received.
All right.
I have a question. How, you know, with all that sort of uncertainty, how much are we committed to or held to once we move forward on the bonds? At what point can we say, we don't actually wanna put X on the ballot?
You don't have to borrow all of it.
So, we just open, we wouldn't actually remove the option, we'd just not execute, exercise it in the future?
We have up until the deadline for. The ballot, the election board cutoff for the development of the ballot. We have up until then to remove something from the ballot.
We probably wouldn't, so we give ourselves the option. Okay, thank you.
All right, the next bond question is parks and recreational bonds. Purpose of funding, of providing funds together with any other available funds for acquiring, constructing, constructing, improving, and expanding new and existing park, greenway and recreational facilities of said town inside and outside its corporate limits, including without limitation, the acquisition of any related land, rights of way, and equipment. And so, that's pretty straightforward, and you can see on the handout that you were giving to break out on that, park development, rehabilitation, greenways, and land acquisition.
Mr. Manager, let me ask you, you know, it refers to other available funds. Is it given, did the, did the part of grants go away? Or, I know we had one, we were able to use one several years ago.
Yeah, my understanding is they did not go away. I know there's always having to lobby to, that they continue the funding, the amount of funding, but they did not go away.
Oh, okay.
We'll just have to decide what's eligible of what we're planning to do for the part of.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if that was part of the mix or not, when we talked about other available funds.
I think that other available funds is the, is the legal counsel's verbiage that they include so that we could use funding from wherever. So, I don't believe legal counsel has any specific funding sources in mind. It is just the, the accepted terminology to allow us to use any revenues we have.
Right, okay.
All right, public safety and services, go ahead.
Remember, we had discussion when we were setting the number, we changed, and took some money from sidewalks and put it in greenways, just to clarify. You can't build greenways with sidewalk monies, but you can build sidewalks with greenway monies. Make sure, we had that, had that discussion, and we had our, we were talking about, just wanna make sure I was loud and clear.
But yeah, sidewalk has to be in close proximity to a road. And greenway doesn't necessarily have to be in close proximity.
But can be.
Right, you can designate your sidewalk as your greenway.
Yeah, thank you.
In some areas, we might have side paths along the road versus the traditional sidewalks, but it depends on location. Public safety and services facilities bonds for the purpose of providing funds together with any other available funds for acquiring, constructing, expanding, and renovating facilities to be used by said town for public safety services, including but not limited to fire and police services and emergency services, and the acquisition of any related land, rights of way, and equipment. And one thing to notice here is we're talking about public safety when it talks about related land, because there is a facility associated with that land. This question does not include land for a public works facility, because there's not a company building or project to go with it. So, we would need a separate question for public works land, or the possibility of, well, I don't think we can do a separate question. We would have to fund it in a different manner, like borrowing and use the land as collateral or whatever. So, just wanted to make that point, that this land that it's talking about in here is related to the fire station facility.
So, the right of you, you can have a separate question. So, we didn't ask the bond council to write a separate one, because we didn't know what council's appetite would be for a question which would be labeled land for corporate purposes, which is the legal term for buying land that, that you might use for some other project that's not also being built with the bond funds. So, the, right now, unless you needed to leave $3 million in the public safety and services fund, that, that would be reduced by 3 million. I don't think, because we have the land for the fire station, there's probably no need to leave that 3 million in that bond question. So, we'd be reducing the overall bond or adding that back somewhere else. But if we are gonna borrow money for the land for public works, then we could go back and work with bond count, walk with Davenport to figure out what other types of financing would look like and how that would affect our debt model. Or, we could add a separate question that's a $3 million question for land for public, land for corporate purposes.
All right, if you left, let me ask you this, does it have to be land acquisition or it says it can be for any service, service or facility, public safety and service facilities? So, it had to be related to public safety and service if it was left in there like that, correct?
Correct. And with no immediate plans to build another public safety building within the lifetime of the bond, I think bond council would advise us not to do that, because, keep in mind, before the local government commission lets us take down each borrow, and we have to go to them and show them specifically what we're borrowing it for, and how far along the plans are, and they'll only let us take down the next ones if we're far enough along with the plans. So, I think that, given that there's, unless there's a particular plan to build some other type of public safety or service facility, you probably wouldn't want to include that, those dollars there, and that's also something that could be financed.
The time horizon for the bond, all of it is probably, what, 10, seven to 10 years of borrowing?
You have seven to borrow without an extension, three-year extension available, so you could extend it to 10 to do the borrow.
I believe the chief had mentioned with the growth in the southern part of the town over the next several years, seven to 10 years, there might need to be another police facility in the southern part of, I mean, just ballpark, and again, the growth we're gonna have over the next seven years is gonna be monumental, and to think we won't have another public safety facility to construct, or we will, that's just my general feeling.
But you've gotta have debt capacity somewhere to buy the land for public works, which is probably sooner. So, if we don't reduce this by 3 million, I don't know that we've got the debt capacity to buy $3 million worth of land on top of this, because we're already, this borrowing and the other borrowings that we've recently done already pull us within a deficit, you know, out into future years, so.
We don't need to borrow this money for six or seven years.
Right, but it would have to fit in the model, and so, Davenport would have to tell us what year we'd be able to, to do this borrowing. And if we added, if you add money for public works on top of this, then it is going to stress our debt capacity for the, for the long-range model. Also, for police, we have worked in touchdown space at, into the fire station, in Fire Five for PD, and so, there's a space there for two officers, a break room and restroom that's got a separate entrance that is being worked into the program for fire. And while I don't wanna speak fully for chief, it actually turned out a little larger than they expected, and I think they believe that that will help them get through a few years of sustaining that growth. And for them to really build another station or somewhere, they would actually be changing the policing model they're using. So, but we have accommodated some immediate needs in that station.
Just note that I think they're saying this touchdown space and not a substation, so.
Correct.
So, different, a difference there.
Question. You know, the fire station started four months, and then four and a half, then went to six. Are we sure $6 million can do it? With cost going up, and didn't we sense, didn't we see a number that shooting range was gonna be more than 300,000?
Well, I think what we learned after the 300,000 was including for the shooting range is that was for a completely different scope project, and to do a larger project that probably, that probably would not even be realistic to use for that.
Yeah, at, at the time, I think there was some relationship with some local, local municipality, and they had some land, and we were just gonna construct something outdoors on that land, but I think that, that relationship no longer exists, and the leadership in that town has changed, so we don't even know if it's feasible anymore. So, yeah, that shooting range number would, would go up.
But I believe also the chief has said that that is not as big a priority as it was when it was originally put into the CIP. And so, I think that was, I think it would be.
Well, we've talked about the shooting range, I was on for 20 years, I'm sitting there saying, okay, is it a priority, it's not a priority, it's a priority, it's not. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not talking about leaving the 3 million at land acquisition, I just wanna make sure we got enough money to cover the fire station, because we know how much will this, this cost, and that cost, and that cost, and we projected. And the shooting range, if we don't need it, okay, we don't need it, or if you want to leave some seed money in there, but do we have enough money? I mean, does the fire station need to be 6.5 million or 7 million? Or, we get caught with our pants now, again, which has happened before. I mean, it's already jumped a million and a half dollars, it's up $2 million from the first time we're talking about it.
Yeah, we're, we're working on the program now for that, and we don't have any cost estimates with it yet, but hopefully, by the time we have to make the June 22nd final decision, we can discuss whether or not it's gonna need to be anymore.
We need to shift the 3 million and make the fire station another number. Fine, let's do it now. Again, let's don't get, I mean, well, I might speak a little ill of the county, but I mean, they're not participating in the pay plan study for another year, and, or they can help us pay for it another year later, and we've been through this before, we're stationed for, so I'm just, that's.
And I think it's a great idea where the police can be in that station there, that 'll, that makes wise use of the dollars, and it's all emergency anyway, so it's strategically located for that area down, and we definitely going to need it, you would Costco and everything else is going in that area.
And if we've already got the capacity accounted for in the model, that 3 million, I think, having it there as a contingency for increased costs is smart if we need it.
I don't disagree with any of those points, I will just, I'll reiterate.
Debt capacity.
We don't have debt capacity for public works land if we keep this 3 million in for that use, so as long as everybody is going into it knowing that.
I'm not saying it's like all three there, maybe add a million to it and take two out, I'm just thinking, or 2.3 out, whatever. But I'm just saying, let's don't yink and yank like we did with the last referendum, like we learned, we pulled money from all over the place to make some things work. And I just got a feeling this is gonna be one of those things that's gonna be more expensive than we think it is. I mean, this number, you're locked into it, it's not like streets where we can do this, that, and the other, you got flexibility, you're pretty much locked into it.
One exercise for tonight is whether or not council wants to have yet another bond question added that is land for corporate purposes that could be used for public works facility, or would we prefer to just address purchasing that through other funding mechanisms whenever the right opportunity comes along? Because you would then be extending out to potentially five bond questions, and it's council's appetite as to how broad do you want to extend this, the number of bond questions?
Well, explaining, and let's be honest, you send that information, you can have it online here, there, and everywhere, when people read land for corporate purposes, that is very misleading, and I understand, that's the law. I understand, I understand, I don't think the appetite, as you said, for the public, that was, that's like land for corporate business, we're gonna buy, we're gonna buy land and give it to somebody. That's what it sounds like.
And it really means the, the purposes of the corporation of the town of Garner, but it's, it is not, it doesn't roll off your tongue from, from a educational standpoint.
Right, and I would think we need to take the shooting range off the table for now, because just looking back at some correspondence from the chief, that cost, according to a consultant that they had look at it, would be more, would be closer to 2 to 3 million dollars. And I, I would say that the public works facility, the land for that, at whatever point, would be a higher priority than the shooting range.
Ronnie, do I remember correctly that part of the reason that that changed is that I believe the current chief feels like he and his folks have better access to some of the existing facilities than was maybe possible at one point in time in the past? Am I remembering that correctly?
I think I heard that, but it's not in this email.
Okay, I didn't know if that email covered that or not.
Being, he didn't mention it as a, a big need, urgent need right now, I would, I would say that's accurate.
I'm pretty sure they have access, sometimes the convenience of when they can use it is a little bit of a problem. I know at one time, Triangle J, council government was talking about possibility of building a, a firing range for people, but I don't think that went anywhere, so probably no need to consider that. But if the chief has given us that indication, I think.
He's saying they have other options.
There's no reason not to go ahead and take it out.
Says it may be a necessity at some point in the future as we grow, but not sure it is appropriate, given the cost and, and where they are in the bond process, and they have other options, so.
All right, let's take it out. Okay, next one. Was that it?
That's it, that's the, right now, the four questions. I think, are we good on the, how we're going to handle the land acquisition?
I have a question about that. So the other ones are worded, you know, Public Safety and Services Facilities Bond. Why could you not have a public works facilities bond?
Because typically I think a building would go with that.
But it doesn't with public safety or parks. They both are sort of generic. They include land acquisition in them along with a bunch of other things. Couldn't you have a public works facilities question? And it could be buildings, it could be land acquisition, it could be whatever.
I reckon, I reckon since it's not going to be a building, it's just going to be land. Maybe that's why that legal counsel directs it that way.
I, I think I understand that. I think Mr. Singleton is right, the way I understand it, that you can get the land to go along with the building you need to build, but not just the land without, because then you're sort of committing to the public that one day down the road, you're going to build that facility on that piece of land without the actual plans to do it. So I think that's why they say it's got to be for corporate purposes, if it's not the building and the land together.
I guess it would depend too on which plan for public works we adopt, a two-campus or single campus, on how soon we'd be doing any rehabilitation or.
Right.
Okay.
There's also an opportunity, and I know that, that we've, we've put some pressure on fund balance, but we also been able to repay, but some of it back. There is an option though to repay yourselves, ourselves. We could purchase the, the land, and then when a bond is issued for the public works facility, you can borrow the money to repay the fund balance you used to buy the land. So we do have the reimbursement resolutions that we use that, that we could do that with. And I think Mr. Beckett is.
There he is, right there, yes.
I didn't misspeak, it's just a timing issue there.
Timing.
But, but we could handle it that way. Is there a window of time, David, between when we buy the land and when we, tell me of the timing? I was thinking 24 or 36.
I was thinking two.
To do that. So there is some window of time that we could do a reimbursement to ourselves if fund balance were used.
Okay, so, well, council's already asked some questions here, but I mean, this is, this is the, this is the pretty solid framework of, of what the bond questions are going to look like, what they're, what they're credited to and so forth, unless there's a strong desire of council to, to include something else. I mean, I think it's a solid program. I, I don't think we're looking to increase it in any substantial way, is that right? Okay.
If we get guidance or get further guidance that we feel like we can cover 2.95 million dollars of, of known stormwater issues through ARPA funding, what's council sentiment about wanting to keep 2.95 million in the referendum if we also think we can do some of that work with the ARPA funds?
As I recall through the stormwater study, we got 10, 12, 15 million dollars for the stormwater projects. So I don't, I just think we need to, I would prefer we leave it in there, even if he can use some of those monies, because we got plenty of stormwater projects, and they're not going to get any, they're not going to disappear.
Not going to go away.
Not going to go away.
It's going to go away.
And we can keep working with bond counsel on these four questions. And if anything significant changes before the action that you have to take on June 22nd, then we can get back with you for then.
Please, yeah.
The biggest thing we're looking at is getting updated number on the fire station. Because if we want to pull, consider the 3 million and 300,000, 3 million and 300,000, it's adding a set amount to the fire station.
Then you do have, in your package, you do have the bond calendar. So the preliminary finding resolution will be on June 22nd. And then you see there, then we start making public notices, application with the LGC happens in July. I won't read it all to you, but that, that details, that details some of the next steps there.
Still plan to have a November referendum. We haven't heard anything different otherwise, so that's still on schedule.
And Mr. Mercer has started, he has issued the RFP for services to help us with developing the educational materials and marketing program to promote, or to educate about the bonds. So that is an RFP that's actively out now. And so we look forward to be able to get someone on board to help us develop those materials and develop the messaging.
And I think it's worth saying, or maybe all council understands is that the town staff can educate. It's up to elected officials and others to advocate.
Correct.
To that end, we've already been talking to advisory boards, because that is one of the other extensions of the council. So whenever meetings have been coming up recently, we've been making them aware of the opportunity for them to help with the bond referendum. And so we were just talking to Ms. Durham on her way out about convening a summer meeting of their parks committee that don't, don't typically meet during the summer, to be able to get to, to meet the new director, but also to be able to receive additional information about the bonds so that they can be sharing that out in the community. So they'll be a part of our, all the advisory boards and committees will be a part of our team that you can liaison with to. Help.
To have a cake.
With that.
Okay.
But just to make sure we're all on the same page, so if we take out land acquisition and find other funding for that, other means of financing in the shooting range, I just want to make sure we have the same number. I'm showing, I'm at 68.5 million as a total?
That sounds right. Didn't do the math.
Yeah, but I feel quite confident that the fire station numbers can go up. I would add 10% to it, just to add 10% to it.
All right, we'll, we'll look at that and consider how much that might need to.
Okay, what else, Mr. Manager?
Well, not for a long discussion, but I did send out some information, a report from Mike Franks, the budget manager, and just some assumptions on what some of the, some of the funding that got freed up from restructuring some things in the budget. So I just want to make sure council's good with the direction there before we finalize it and try to go for adoption on the first meeting in June. So after doing some of the changes, I think we had a, a surplus of, it seemed like it was 100 and, oh, it was 79,000 dollars. And so we recommended some other, some other things to add to the budget, one being bleacher replacements, just for safety, a better, better design on the bleachers. And I know we had some bleachers that had wood planks, and we were trying to get away from, from that. And these newer bleachers have a, a back or a safety rail, whatever you want to call it. And then also, there were some positions asked for in the budget. And one that I thought would be beneficial to the town for various reasons was the risk manager. So recommending six months of funding for the risk manager to help with the safety program, FMLA, some of the medical services we offer through Fast Med. And, and also as we talk about merger and fire merger, just to, either that position would work on some of that or either free up the existing HR staff to have bandwidth to talk, start talking about some of the pre-work and some of the things that might come out of the consultant's report as we start preparing for that merger. So anyway, just wanted to see if you were okay with that direction.
I am, in terms of, yeah, this was the sheet, had the red stuff, yeah, okay. I looked at that, but I appreciate your explanation there. And while council's still thinking, maybe wants to ask questions. I think I was, I saw correctly and was pleased to see it that the Public Works has, has been able to go ahead and initiate, I believe, a replacement of the fencing at Lake Benson Park.
Correct.
I was thinking at one time, maybe we needed to have some money in next year's budget for something like that. But at any rate, obviously they found some money to do that.
But just from some of the surplus, you know, that's some of the opportunities we can take a look at, especially after the third quarter. We can look at what surplus dollars there may be and kind of knock some of those things out. And so, yeah, they're getting the RFP for some of that fencing right now.
Good, there's a need for some replacement. Some places is okay, but it's worn quite a bit over the years, for sure.
And it's going to be a little bit of a different style than the.
Okay, so the whole thing's going to be replaced?
Split rail, yeah, then the split rail. Be more of a three, what, three-panel, I don't know the technical name of it, but three flat boards. Three, yeah, so.
Is it going to be wood or is it going to be a?
Oh, it'll be wood, not, not the vinyl, but it'll be wood. It'll be wood, it'll, I think it'd be hopefully less easy to climb through or over and be easier to maintain and those type of things, so, and to repair than just conventional split rail.
It'll probably retain the basic character, I guess, of the, of the original fence.
Yeah, somewhat, yeah, it looks a little, little different, but it'll, it'll have the same kind of character.
Okay, council, I wasn't trying to preempt anybody. Anybody have a further question on what the manager just covered on the, the budget change there with these items?
Not for this year, but can, I think we might need to get the, this updated, the one we handed out. I'm not sure where it came from, but the ad valorem taxes don't seem to be projected out properly. So I might want to look at that. Those increases seem really small and also don't seem to factor in any reevaluations. So it kind of creates a staggering deficit when you get out past five years. So you might want to just tweak those. I know that, once you get out past four or five years, it's hard anyway, but the, those numbers look a little exaggerated, so.
Okay.
We could just work on that formula a little bit, that would be good.
You're, you're primarily talking about Row Two?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else on that?
I believe that's all I had, was, were there any other reports? Oh, yeah, 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 you do have the pending agenda, yeah, we didn't put it in the book, but you do have.
Sorry, we missed that in your, in your packet. So there's a handout, and I'll be happy to email that out electronically after tonight. Also planning to email the slides from the consultant tonight out to everyone.
That's all I have.
Okay. All right, well, that wasn't officially under manager reports, but do you have other items under that, Mr. Dickson?
No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. All right, I'm going to go to council reports, and I'll start to my right with Mayor Pro Tem Behringer.
Nothing, sir, not this time.
Okay, go back to my left to Mr. Singleton.
I've just missed a couple of things. One, thanks to our public works, the work they continue to do, keep things looking great around town. Secondly, I'll mention this on enforcement, as I have last few weeks sent some emails to Mr. Beasley, Mr. Grinder in regards to tall grasses that time of the year, and they hop right on it. Oftentimes Doug even says, I've already started enforcement procedures on that. I sent the letter this side or the other. So they're on top of those things, and I appreciate it, because that's, you know, somebody will say, hey, will you go ride by and look at this house? The grass is two feet tall. And so I appreciate the hard work they do on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dellinger, anything? Mr. Vance?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. And Mr. Happy? Okay, as mayor, I'll just note, I guess it was the whole past week we celebrated Public Works Week, and some activities took place in conjunction with that. And I had a chance to participate in one of those, and I know the, the manager was available, I guess, on the day of the celebration. But I'm pleased that Public Works was able to get some much deserved recognition, as has already been noted by Mr. Singleton. I think they do yeoman work and do a good job.
I'm not sure what quantity or, you know, how many pounds of donations they had, but it seemed to be a pretty successful event, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, that's all for council reports. That covers, I believe, everything on the agenda. No closed sessions tonight. And anybody else, for the good of the group, I'm not trying to extend the meeting, but I sometimes recognize hooks. Katie, nothing from you? Okay, you're okay, all right. All right, well, I will entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So moved.
Moving second properly before, saw those in favor, please say aye. And there's no opposition. Declare this work session of the council to be.